I'd like to call a meeting in order, start with the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, I'll have a clerk please call the roll.
Supervisor Fountain?
Here.
Treasurer Horning?
Here.
Look Chopiu?
Here.
Trustee Colaini?
Here.
Trustee Jermaine?
Absent.
Trustee Harper?
Here.
Trustee Petrucci?
Here.
Thank you, trustee Jermaine will be here, he has just texted me he's in Fenton, so we expect him here in the next 20 minutes or so. Item number four is approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved.
Support. Motion by Treasurer Horning, second by trustee Harper, any discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Item number five is called to the public, anybody called to the public this evening?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Kimberly Rochelow, Heartland Township residents. First I would like to start with thanking Bill, Mr. Fountain. You addressed an issue that my residents had with Comcast, they came out and not only expedited the issue but took care of it in such a way I've never seen such vigor from Comcast. They came out, they dropped a new line from the pole, they said we don't know how you're even getting serviced for the last seven years, with how much static the line was creating, it was so old. But with that I also want to bring to your attention, it's the entire structure off of Heartland Hills Drive, it's ancient. They said that I'm not the only one that has extremely old wires and lines being run down from these poles, they said there is a section of it that's relatively updated but they said the other section is pretty much from the beginning of that sub in the late 60s, early 70s. So I did want to bring that to your attention but I also wanted to do it with a thank you because we have one line now, it's brand new, don't have to worry about it, they took the ugly funky box off the back of their house, yay! Thank you. Now on a more serious note, I am running for a delegate position for Heartland Township and in light of everything that's happened with Hillary, I think it's fair to ask, what do Heartland Township representatives such as yourselves do for checks and balances to make sure that the ethics, the integrity, the morals, because I believe that's important, are kept in check so that we as Heartland Township residents know you guys do have our interests best at heart? And with that I will sit back down.
Well, just one comment, if you look on that table over there, we've all signed an oath from this board that we-
I noticed that.
So we've pledged to that ourselves.
The other thing is, we're probably one of the most transparent organizations you'll find, I work with a lot of municipalities because I'm an attorney that works in the municipal law-
Good to know.
And I can tell you that when you shine the light on things, tends to keep people honest and do the right thing, so for what it's worth, you know, there are those who would disagree but I think that our website is, provides a lot of information that the public, if they took the time to go through it, you can get a lot of information off our website, our meetings are all recorded, we have a special software that basically records all our information and compiles it for minutes, and then the minutes are available. So, you know, I think that's pretty good for an organization, especially on the rural areas, things tend, and this is not a criticism, it's just a fact of life out in the rural area, you tend to have folks who kind of loosey-goosey on things, not intentionally but just because that's how things have always been. And that sometimes raises concerns by some residents because they're sort of loosey-goosey. Sometimes that's good too because at the end of the day, they probably get more done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number six is approval of our consent agenda.
So moved. I have one change to the agenda on the minute, meeting minutes, trustee Jermaine pointed out that in the board reports, I referred to Merit Industries, should have been Merit Energy, he requested that we make that change. It was in the-
Do you need a motion?
Just friendly amendment.
Just an amendment, yes.
There's no second.
Okay, so I had a motion from Colaini, and I didn't hear the second.
For the consent agenda.
For the consent agenda, was there a second on that?
No. I'll second it.
Okay, second by trustee Harper, is there any other discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Item number seven is pending a new business, item number seven A is 2132 Residential Monitoring Plan Change Order, good evening.
Good evening. So the change order that's being proposed this evening is a result of our former wastewater treatment plant monitoring program. We have this evening Rob DeWeyer from AMAC who oversees our monitoring program, his organization, he's the supervisor of our particular program. Essentially what we have is a chloride exceedance at the northern end of our parcel and it has, the exceedance has triggered, per the consent judgment, that we need to enter into a residential monitoring plan. Basically what you have before you is the change order to develop the plan and submit it to DEQ. Rob and I were able to meet with DEQ and go over the details of the exceedance as well as the historical data and the DEQ provided us some guidance in how to go about developing this plan, which has shaped this change order. So what we're requesting this evening, or what Public Works is requesting, is the approval of this change order based upon those parameters. Be happy to answer any questions, I know that was kind of a brief overview, this is an ongoing monitoring plan and it's kind of stepping into another chapter if you will.
I do have a few questions, I, in the past, that particular well that showed the higher reading in the past, was it in the acceptable range I would imagine?
Go ahead, Rob.
I have the exact numbers here but in the past, there was one chloride exceedance, I don't recall the year, it was in past years, maybe five years ago, but in general, it has been within the regulatory required limits.
Okay.
It was in 2009 was the last time that it had a single unconfirmed exceedance.
All right, so since we haven't added any more to the problem on the surface level, my question is, is it possible that the impact is coming off of the roads because in winter time we put chloride on them and in summertime we put chloride on these roads and now there's a higher level of chloride, you know, I mean, it might not have been from the waste treatment plant, it's from stuff we're doing today, not only us but the state, county?
There, that is a very, very good question, there has been documented contributions from alternate, what we call alternate sources of sodium and chloride, which would be road salting, stormwater discharges from developments that have occurred in the area, septic systems can be sources of sodium and chlorides, but there's been documented cases of sodium and chloride. It's very hard to discern between those, if it's all salt when it comes down to it, so at this point, the DEQ is aware of it, we put in our reports every year, we sample, we collect surface water samples yearly on behalf of the township as part of our monitoring program from the stormwater sources, which is somewhat reflective I would say of road salting, or parking lot salting if we can, you know, generalize without pointing the finger, so that seasonal variation and contribution is documented.
Okay, I guess my concern is that we might never get away from this problem if we continue to salt our roads, I mean, it's in constantly paying, you know, your company to monitor something that's, wasn't caused by the original problem. And I think that that needs to be addressed somehow, looked at, some study, somebody needs to really identify the source, whether it's, you know, is it truly coming from, you know, our wastewater treatment plant or is it coming from other sources, that's just my concern.
Yeah, we do use potassium as a tracer and if you get into the history of the wastewater, the former wastewater treatment plant, where sodium and chloride discharge, you know, to the, as a pass-through of the wastewater treatment process, sodium and chloride passes through, is not treated, is discharged, and at one point, they, the township required that people switch to potassium chloride rather than sodium and chloride, so there, you know, were all those years of sodium and chloride being discharged and it's from the backwash and water softener treatment is really where the majority of it comes from, and then at another point, when that was discontinued and potassium chloride was used, then potassium started being added to the groundwater system, and we do use that as a tracer, there's no regulatory limits on potassium but there's a certain threshold that we try to identify sodium and chloride that has that potassium attached with the data. In this particular instance, there is no potassium there but the concern is based on the direction of groundwater flow in the aquifer, the groundwater systems, this being immediately downgrading of the former discharge area, that it's very hard to discern at this point and we, you know, Bob and I had that discussion with the DEQ and like I said, we put it in our report, the concern is, is that, you know, multiple years of discharge without potassium that could just be the leading edge, so if you envision, you know, as the groundwater flows, you could have that initial slug of groundwater without the potassium. So it's something that we continue to push and we will continue to push, there's no easy answer on that.
And correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, the DEQ would look at, that treatment plant was exceeding its levels at millions of gallons a day was going through there and that they would, for how many years that happened versus the road runoff being a figurative drop in the bucket perhaps, so.
Mr. Wickman, thank you for adding that because they did, I'm sorry, they did, the DEQ did mention that during our discussions a couple weeks ago, the sheer volume and magnitude of what was discharged.
Well, you could probably, if you tested the wells at different periods of time over a course of period of time, you could see probably a-
We do, we do track the trends.
Yeah.
I know you probably all can't see but the little charts, you know, we do submit them in real size with the report to look at the fluctuations, but we don't really see what I would call a seasonal variation because it's too small of a scale to show, but that's the reason the surface water sampling is done, so we can continue to point out that, you know, there's other contributions here and, you know, the intent is at some point to bring this thing to a close, which at case in point, what your questioning concern is, is, you know, will this go on forever and that's not the intent.
One other point I want to make, you mentioned a seasonal variation, but I look at it as, in winter time, we put road salt on, summertime, we put the salt on our dirt roads, so it's like, you're always putting salt on these roads, it's not like it changes from season to season, it's being done year round.
Right, and then the point I make is we don't see a seasonal, a real seasonal trend and we only sample now once per year in the groundwater monitoring wells, not the residential wells but the monitoring well networks, so we, at this point, we just don't see a seasonal trend, we don't, you know, generate enough data to potentially even look at that case. We certainly see it in the surface water though, you know, orders of magnitude higher in the winter months versus the spring and fall.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Just as, and Rob and I will certainly continue to be advocates on behalf of the township obviously, but also to continue to support and trying to fight this and challenge them. In fact, the meeting with DEQ, when we met with them preliminary, you know, we did try every angle we could, there's really no getting around the consent judgment at this point, they are going to require this residential monitoring plan. Unfortunately, until we get the results from that residential monitoring plan, we don't know what the next step is. If we get favorable results, we'll call that, we may resort back to, you know, that may prove that we only have the test once a year, it may prove that, hey, we only have the test once every two years.
And it's worth noting, and we've had successes, I mean, there was a time, the number of wells we monitor today versus historically.
A couple things on that note, you know, the residential wells were sampled historically near the beginning of this process and that's important to note that there's been no documented and it is in the change order, no documented impacts to residential wells at this point and, you know, if we could, this is just a step as a precautionary measure based on the data to make sure that that hasn't happened. But to James or Mr. Wickman's point, you know, at one point, the sampling consisted of 30 groundwater monitoring wells and we're down to seven monitored wells, which we feel are the key wells, because there are certain wells out here where we do see that impact to the road sal, I don't want to call it road salt, but the alternate source contributions, and we've been able to document that, you know, the wells that we're monitoring now, we haven't been able to correlate that contribution, although we don't see the potassium in this particular well, we haven't made that correlation.
That brings up a point, if you're going to be monitoring residential wells, I know if they have a septic system, many people use their water softener and they dump their brine into their septic system, which goes out to the, under the ground, and where is it going to go? So if you're testing a well that's near somebody that uses a water softener with salt-
It's certainly a possibility that that could happen and we've seen that happen before, there are setback requirements, you know, that wells have to be a certain distance from septics, I believe it's 50 feet in a residential level and I could be mistaken on that, I'm going off memory, but I believe it's 50 feet. You know, we'll have to consider all options, once we get the data, we'll have to look and, you know, it's not only that but the depth of the well, we monitor three different aquifers, you know, groundwater systems, one near the surface, one intermediate and then one deeper, we would have to look and try to determine, you know, hopefully they'll have well logs available that give us information on their wells and try to make any type of correlation we can based on that data. In other words, it's not, just because something shows up, good or bad, doesn't mean we will immediately look at it and think it's from the wastewater plant, we'll make the best decision we can based on the data.
If there aren't any other questions, I mean, we'll entertain a motion for the change order.
I'll break the motion.
I'll support that.
Motion by trustee Harper, second by trustee Colaini, is there any other discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, motion carries. Thank you.
Yep, thank you and we appreciate helping out, thank you.
Okay, item number seven B is water reliability study and water fund capital improvement. Mr. West?
Thank you again, what we have basically before you is the draft of the updated water reliability study, looking for the township board approval, so it'll be prior to submitting it to the state. The report itself is kind of long, but I've identified basically an executive summary here and basically you can see that we've identified three main improvement recommendations from the study, that's kind of to keep our system in compliance and keep up with the development that is being proposed. One of the key factors here is the third filter vessel is basically a need at this current time. Our firm capacity rating on our filtration system, last year we peaked at 125% of the approved limit, so we are, Public Works is preparing a proposal for the third filter vessel that will increase, if we add the third filter, our firm capacity to 1.72 million gallons a day, which our peak last year was 1.09, so we'll have, we'll be in compliance again and basically we have a high pressure issue east of US 23 that continues to get worse and it's not going to play well with the system, once the system hits a, say 20 years old, those pipes aren't going to be able to take that higher pressure much longer, so the recommendation is to install a pressure reducing valve, otherwise known as PRV, along And then, once we get the filtration within compliance, the next weakest link will most likely be another supply well. Obviously the supply well will be dependent on future development, so we are currently, our firm capacity rating for the, for the supply is 1.45 million gallons a day, and again, our peak last year was 1.09, so we are certainly well within compliance at this time with the water supply, the filtration is there. So that's a-
What's expectation on the new, those new developments along M59?
I don't know where, you have Pleasant Valley?
Is it Grodnau, is he going to connect to the water?
Yes, Grodnau is connected to the water. The study has indicated we can pretty much do approximately 50 more REUs and we're probably going to get red flagged and dinged by DEQ if we try and pursue much more over that. Obviously each development requires a water, water main permit from the EQ, right now, we're already, we're close to getting notified that we may not be able to approve that water main extension because of the filtration deficiency. So, we've known it's, it's been coming in the works and it's, it's time to bring that online, so obviously we talked about it a couple meetings ago and I'm still working with the engineers to get a proposal for that, hopefully have that here within the next 60 days. But you can kind of see on the side here, we have the current conditions, you can see what our max day demand was, 2007, we exceeded and, but we, that was actually one of our highest years, but like I say, 1.09 was our max and we are basically deficient in the filtration system. And then if you scoot down a little bit lower, you can see the proposed, those are the confirmed developments that at the time this study was being conducted, these were in the works, a lot of these are actually underway already, and then if you scoot down a little bit more, you can see the proposed REU additions based on the future land use zoning, however, the REU allocations for those are, if the developer were to maximize the development, basically put as many REUs on that parcel as they could. So those are very extreme numbers, but just to kind of let you know what we have, based on the future land use map, we've identified A through F as higher density parcels and-
Is A behind the Venture Church?
Uh, no, that is actually-
Off Hacker Road.
Yeah, off the Hacker Road.
That's what I wondered, well, aren't the ones next to that, because I thought that that space right there was the Venture Church where-
Right there, where the cursor is, is Venture Church. A was never part of the original water district, so they would be additional if they were to come online, that's one that the DEQ may step up and say, that was never part of your original water district and if you want to bring those 38 REUs online, you're going to have to install that filter.
Behind the church is Walnut Ridge and that's mentioned up here, that's already in the pipeline.
It's already in-
In the plan.
Yeah, they're, they're in the actual water district, the water district actually ended at the west Venture Church property line and it never extended further west to Hacker.
So you did see a preview of this a couple months ago, tonight is to formally approve the reliability study, there is one other item I just wanted to highlight from the CIP that we really haven't discussed, and you see an updated five-year CIP in your packet, and that's for the, the plant, the water treatment plant. There's a couple of factors in play right now, if we, right now, the building is built for four treatment vessels, we have two built, we're obviously talking about adding a third. Right now, the empty spaces, those empty bays are being used for storage and there are a couple things, the DEQ is getting more strict on, on what they will allow and not allow in storage in the same area of treatment, so we have that going on, they're going to be more strict on wanting to see less of that storage happening there, some of the storage of water parts and whatnot that is in the bottom of the tower, they will be giving direction on to, that that cannot be used for storage, and then when we build that third treatment vessel, again, taking up more footprint, that is pushing an issue where we probably have to add on to that building as it was originally designed for the future, potential future fifth and sixth treatment vessels, and we would recommend to, to build that out, to allow for that storage for now and then it could be used for a treatment as needed down the road as it was designed. So that, that number, we highballed it at 250,000, but we, you know, haven't spent much time on that yet, but I wanted to point that out because we haven't talked about that to date.
So I move to approve the 2015, 2020 Water System Reliability Study update, including the proposed five-year capital improvement plan as presented.
All right.
Motion by Treasurer Horning, second by trustee Petrucci, I have one question.
Sure.
What percentage of the water that we use out of that plant is used for irrigation and/or drafts, do we have any idea?
It, we have an idea, but what we're trying to do is measure peak hourly and that's part of the new skate upgrades you can see, as well as a historian upgrade, all we can measure right now is peak daily, but when you can dial into peak hourly, the majority of irrigation systems come on between 6:00 and 8:00 a.m. and that's where we're really going to be able to tell. We have a peaking factor right now where between 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m., we suspect up to 42% of the water coming out of the plant between those two hours is for irrigation, but again, that drops off at noon, you know, it's totally different figure at noon, in the grand scheme of things, we can't quantify it all because there's a lot of people who don't have irrigation meters separate, a lot of commercial businesses just run their irrigation through their main meter, basically we, we're trying to go in and deduct that and come up with an average, but right now, preliminary results, we'd say, on an average in the seasonal demand, we're looking at about 30% overall.
So I'm just throwing out a question, if you had a separate meter for people's irrigation versus what they use in their building, would there be a way to minimize some of the costs to this if you watered at 3:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the morning, or spread it out, I'm just, I mean, it may be complex to do that, however-
No, certainly, you had great, great viewpoint.
If the spikes are coming-
I've implemented irrigation ordinances in the past and it works great if you're a wholesale customer, buying from somebody else, our water costs the same generally speaking at midnight as it does at noon generally speaking, because when the demand gets that high, it starts pulling out of the tower. So the tower fills up whenever it's low, so, I mean, we're still filling at the same, our well pumps are still pumping at the same rate, the influx is coming out of the tower during our peak demand, so as far as our electric bills and whatnot, you're not going to see that much of a change because it'll fill the tower back up and it takes out of there, if that makes sense. That's where our peak is coming from.
It's also worth noting that, and you can see on this, that a couple of our highest days were in late September, one of these days was a temperature of 78 outside, and actually, last year's peak was September 29th, so it's, can't be too certain that that's a simple solution to it or not, that there's other things that are driving demand potentially.
Flushing the hydrant-
Hydrant, yeah. You know, there's, there's many different, you know, even a, even a water main break, I'll tell you, if there's a structural fire, we've been working close with the fire department, a fire, 20 minutes with a hydrant open, it'll drop that tower very quickly, in fact, it triggers a skate alarm and we get it on our phones, the water guys- In fact, it triggers a, a skate alarm, and we get it on our phones, the water guys, and we can tell something's going on in the system when that tower starts dropping. Usually, the first calls to the fire department. And, but they've been very good. They, they call me if they have a structure fire, and we can kind of go into our SCADA system and manipulate the pumps to kind of boost them up because we know it will drop the tower within 20 minutes if they have a hydrant fully open. So, that's the advantage of, of the SCADA system, so.
I have a question. The report that was prepared identified about a dozen areas for improvement that were prioritized. Is that the same list that's on the other page that James had up?
This one here?
Yes.
Um, not exactly.
So, I'm trying to figure out how you came up with this list as opposed to what was in the report.
Uh, this list is more reality. I'll phrase it that way. I've never been a big fan of looking out 30 years. Our prior 2010 reliability study had us taking water all the way up to the Clyde Road intersection, which, that sounds good and a master plan, but when you realize the cost of that is, you know, $10 million, it kind of brings it back into reality of what, what can we do? When we were dealing with HRC on this reliability study, my goal was to have them focus on the M59 corridor. That's what the water system was put in for. I'm not interested in trying to see where we're going to be in 30 years when today we can't even meet the demand on M59. So, this CIP was trying to focus the five-year on meeting the needs that we need today. Because I kind of, I mean, we're deficient now, I have little faith that a report telling us where we should be in 30 years is going to aid us, but they also, the 30-year is assuming all the developments come into play. My hesitation with that is, a lot of those improvements are depending on when the development comes. So, for me to say, you know, "We need these within the next five years," it'll all depend on what development comes in, and how many developments, how many additional REUs are coming on the system, just like the filter. We've heard about the filter, well, since I started here, and now it's actually becoming a reality of, "Hey, guys, we're in the red zone, we need to add it." But it's always been on the edge of, "Hey, if we get X, Y, and Z to develop, we're going to need that filter vessel." And that's kind of how I see these water main extensions and looping that they have proposed in there, is it's all going to be developer-driven. So, I apologize, but that, this is more the, the reality, what we need today.
And, and this document is an existing, living document. And so, what we've, he's done is taken the existing document, updated it based on the findings of the reliability study for more relevance. So, because we already had a, a five-year CIP we had been working with, and you've seen before.
And most of those additional water mains, we'll be able to have the developer install those. When those developments come into play, they're usually the large parcels where adjoining water mains need expansion. We saw that with the Rosen Sons when they were looking at coming in. We were, our preliminary review from Public Works was that they were going to have to install 16-inch water main to meet the fire flows, which was also called out in the CIP. So, I think it would be a little premature to say that the Township Board needs to put that on their radar as, as your expense, because I think a lot of that will be driven by development and ultimately put on the cost of developers.
And this CIP does take that, those contingencies into account. You can see in the later years, these, these, these plans aren't etched in stone. I mean, as we saw with the filter vessel, we've been talking about that for five-plus years. And these other improvements that might be needed are going to be driven by, if REUs are sold and we see an increase in use flow. So, there will be REU costs or sales coming in to pay for these things.
So, the, the additional expansion that we want, or that we're proposing, is that the item for $500,000?
Yes, that's the filter system, the third filter system. And that's all-inclusive. For the $500,000 price tag, we'll include the new media in the existing two filters, because if we just put it in the third one, obviously, water's going to take the path of least resistance, and it's going to overtax that brand-new filter till it catches up with filters that have 13-year-old media in it. I don't, I don't want to hang my hat on this, but we do have our pilot study being reviewed currently through DEQ. If that does get approved, that will bring our firm capacity up to 1.15, which certainly it's, it's better than being deficient, but when you have a peak of 1.09, you're still not that much more in compliance. So, just more of an FYI, that may be an added bonus as well, and buy us a little bit more time if we can get that filter increase rating approved.
So, I noticed that's in fiscal year 17, 18. When do you propose that installation would actually happen?
Well, most likely what'll happen is the proposal will come before the Township Board, and we could probably do the, the prep work perhaps over the winter on the inside of the plant. And I, I would say it's a 12-month project in its entirety, because there's only certain times we're going to be able to take the plant down to do the media replacement. Ideally, we, there's going to be one filter going offline at a time. We have to get the DEQ approval on all this as well, which historically has taken anywhere from, from two to four months in itself. So, I'd put it in the 2017, 2018. It may, I, I think that's the year that we're going to have to pull the trigger, quite frankly. And we may start some engineering, I may request engineering based on this proposal to get started earlier with at least a design aspect of it.
Seems like, based on everything you've said, this is something that should happen sooner than that.
Mm-hmm.
But DEQ hasn't told us yet. We're just anticipating they will.
Well, we're going as fast as we can. Right now...
Yeah, no, right, yeah.
We can, we can install it next year if we want it.
Yep.
Provided we can spend the funds and do it properly.
Absolutely. And, and they are actually developing the proposal. We did notify DEQ, let them know that, you know, our engineer will be contacting them. Humphreid and Terry is the company that manufactures it. It's what our existing two vessels are, and they're the ones that did the media pilot study. So, they've been in touch, they're in negotiations with the rerating. Long story short, we are progressing. We're not waiting, and we're not in a holding pattern. We are moving forward with the filter vessel. It may come before this Township Board early, you know, and that's just more a placeholder, if you will. Is it needed now? Yeah, absolutely. But the peak demand is only going to, as fall comes around the corner, those demands will drop off. So, really, the time we need it is in the seasonal, which, if we could have it installed before the next peak, in the next summer, that would certainly be beneficial.
Okay. And Mr. Supervisor, last question I have, probably be for James, but Bob, you might know the answer, too. On your, if you expand your screen a bit, we've looked at the cash flow at the very bottom over the coming fiscal years.
Yeah.
And we've seen the bottom out at 129,000 the year we may install the, the new filter. Why is it that when we get to the last column, we're all the way back up to 821,000?
Uh, so, the rows below that, we, we start making, those later years are those contingency ones. Those are the needs that are based on development. And that there, there would be, we've, we've conservatively estimated that there'd be some REU sales that go with that, and that's the 100, 100 REU sales a year. And that revenue, that's not paying a bond. The bond's all through SAD. That, that's coming in straight to pay for this infrastructure to support these new connections, and that's what they're paying their REU for. So, that's a positive cash flow in REU sales. The fact is, we're selling REUs every year, and, and we haven't shown that here, but, you know, that cash balance is of a conservative estimate of flow.
So, to put it simply, if the Township approves these proposals for expenditures when they come forward, the water fund itself is going to be paying for all of this in its entirety?
Yes, and all through the, all the REUs people have purchased over the years.
I rest.
Well, just on that same note, then, if we look at 2017 and 18, there's a projected $547,000 with the REUs sales. If you don't sell that many, you're going to be short in your cash, correct?
And a lot of this is, I'd like to say, a lot of it's more placeholders. Quite frankly, if you look, we had the, the building, expanding the building footprint, and maybe we wait a year on that? You know, the filter's the immediate concern. I've put in a budget number of $250,000. I don't know what expanding that building, two more filter vessels would be. Is that a priority? No, we could probably put up a, a small garage for $50,000 and serve the same purpose and get by. It's just, we can certainly adjust it accordingly, but obviously, that's developer-driven as well. And these are, these costs are on the high side. Right now, preliminary results with the filter vessel, we're looking, right now, I'm having them revise the quote, but we're looking at around 400,000. So, there would be a substantial saving since we're doing the media and the filter at the same time, and I don't want you to, to grab onto that number yet, but preliminary numbers are hovering around that mark. So, that's a bonus if they come in cheaper than that.
Now, I have one last question.
Yeah, absolutely.
How many REUs is $547,000?
It's 100. 100 REUs at the bottom there.
So, that follows the developmental plan?
Yeah, roughly, I, I mean, we've, like, like Mr. Wickman said, we have not even tracked in this spreadsheet the REUs that we've sold in the last two years. We just, because they're not that many, but, you know, you look at Walnut, Walnut Ridge, that's 64 REUs. If that Hacker Road property comes on, that's another 38. I mean, there's 100 right there, and we have more developments proposed than, and that's just for residential. All these commercial developments are multiples of REUs, you know? KFC comes in, or any fast food, it's seven REUs just, just for one building. So, I think that is a very conservative number if, if things progress in the Township. And obviously, the third, another well will certainly depend on development. We wouldn't need it until that development's in place, which would buy REUs and fund the well. The difference is the Township kind of has to front the money, because you have to have the well in place before DEQ will approve the plans.
Right.
So...
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
One quick question on the pressure-reducing valve.
Yes, pressure-reducing valve.
In the executive summary, it's 250,000.
Yes.
Capital improvement plan, it's 175. In the write-up, it's 500 to a million.
Reason being is the, the valve itself is relatively inexpensive. What we're trying to do right now is there's parallel water mains on M59, and right now, HRC is reviewing that, and they said it could be arranged depending if you need isolation valves. We may possibly need two of them because you have two water mains going right on the north side of 59, the south side of 59. What I would like to do is try and push it further east where we don't have parallel water mains and put it there. But you run into problems if you ever need to service it because you're going to shut down the east side of the, the water system. So, we're trying to work on a bypass those figures right now until we have the isolation valve sorted out. I could tell you the valve itself, let's say it's $125,000, and they tell me you need two of them, and you need an isolation bypass, or, you know, bypass when you isolate it, that could turn into a $500,000 project. We're trying to minimize that impact. So, I apologize for that. There were many figures coming in as we were looking at that.
That's our call for the question.
Any other discussion? Being in all of the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 7C is water treatment plant driveway improvements. Mr. West?
Yes. The water treatment plant, we just had the concrete apron poured last week, and what we're looking to do now is, the, the actual driveway going back to the water plant is, it has no, no proper drainage to it. The ditch line has all been kind of filled in with brush and, and small trees, saplings and whatnot. What we're looking to do is actually have some asphalt millings put on the water treatment plant driveway, as well as have the ditch line between the treatment plant driveway and the schools, six foot of it cleared out, so we can have proper crown on that driveway. It, it's getting quite cumbersome to drive on the washboard. Even after we have it graded, it's, it's back to washboard within a week because it doesn't have any proper drainage, doesn't have any proper aggregate on there as a, a surface. We've kind of gotten by over time, but now that we're going to have some construction back there, certainly would behoove us to improve that driveway for all the increased truck traffic we'll have. So, what I'm requesting is the approval of the asphalt millings for the treatment plant driveway. The CIP also called for the installation of a driveway at the Foxridge Wellhouse. It kind of dips off the edge there. I don't know if you recall, about four or five months ago, we had two of our wells go offline, and we had to have the contractor come out there and pull the wells because of an electrical spike. When those trucks were leaving, three trucks, three of the four trucks had to be towed out with a tow truck because there is no drainage there. It's basically grass that has washed out over time. It sits to the north side of Foxridge Development. It was never finished. What I'm looking to do is, we bid out the driveway unit pricing, and Priest Companies was the lowest bidder on that. He's, he's offered to extend the unit pricing for the Foxridge driveway as a not-to-exceed cost. I did not bid out Foxridge because we don't actually have an engineered print, and it would be very hard to get apples-to-apples quotes on that. But he was willing to extend his unit price, and we can kind of guide him through that. That's kind of a unique project, and what I would basically request is that the Township Board hold me accountable for that project and let me kind of oversee that because we don't have an engineered plan. I didn't want to spend $5,000 on engineering a $9,000 driveway. So, that was my goal with that. So, I'm seeking approval of both to the same contractor who's extending the unit price cost, and I will oversee the project personally.
Have we already approved, or has the work already been done, the actual entrance in 59?
Yes, it is completed. It was open to traffic Monday morning at 11:00 AM. That was part of the concrete, 2016 concrete contract.
Have you considered paving the driveway?
Water treatment plant driveway? I have. What I would prefer is to wait for that plot to develop and put that cost on the developer because if that farmland ever does develop, they'll have to have an entryway coming in off of 59 there. We could basically have some sort of shared access, and we would only be responsible at that point for a smaller section. So, yes, we did look into it. The costs were, if memory serves me correct, I want to say the, around $87,000, and figured that someday that, that property will develop. But certainly willing to entertain the paving aspect. I have no qualms about that.
They're already updating the drainage and, you know, by asphalt tailing, so what's the difference? Are we already down to 70?
Uh, the difference is about $65,000, rough and dirty.
You want me to make a motion?
For 65? 87? I pick, well, if we're going to do that, then I'll piggyback the Hero paving project. We'll get a better price on it. Why don't you just give me an even 100?
I prefer we don't make $65,000 decisions.
If you recall...
You can make the motion if you wish.
The paving of that drive was actually on the water CIP about five years ago, and the board astutely suggested that it not be on there, and it was taken off at that time. And we, we agreed.
I have a question on one of the contracts.
Yes.
That you have, has a date, August 31st, 2015.
We'll correct that.
So, it should say 60?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted, was something from last year that you extended forward?
No, no, they, well, no.
Okay. And that was the one from Priest?
Yeah. We'll certainly change that up. That's my air.
Any discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Harper, second by Trustee Jermaine. Any other discussion? Being in all of the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, motion carries. And, thank you. Mr. West, you have the Springerfield parking lot.
Sure.
Well, it's more, I... Well, it's more, we presented you some numbers on the, what it would cost to pave it, since we're thinking so generously about that. But I don't necessarily believe that's the case, but we want to at least communicate those numbers to you. More importantly, it's a public policy question. We've met with the schools on this. When I started here nine years ago, this was starting to become an issue of students parking in that parking lot during the day, and that, at that time, it was to evade the cost of the parking permit. Now it's practically needed. They are full, they have their biggest class sizes ever, and they're becoming drivers. And by the end of this last school year, Springer Park, or Springerfield parking lot was anarchy. And so, a couple of things that we need direction on. We had explored the idea of possibly doing permitted parking there. That's an idea the schools can't endorse, and really don't have the ability to help us with. And they, in fact, are suggesting or asking, just like they did nine years ago, that the township prohibit daytime parking there to, and allow them to tell student drivers, particularly sophomores that acquire their license throughout the year, no driving to school. This question for you, is, would the board, that's the ask of the schools, is for us to consider doing that? It certainly can be done. It would alleviate an issue. I think the wear and tear on that parking lot has been exponentially impacted by that, what's happening there. Or we could allow it to happen, we could still do our own permitting to allow it to happen. I'm looking for feedback from the board. I did, I guess in full disclosure, I would have to tell you, if we do decide to prohibit parking there, we'd probably have to do some sort of an ordinance, where there's some sort of permit system, and we'd want to prohibit it at the fire hall, as well as the Hero Center, except by permit that we would issue to the people that obviously need to be there during the day. My first concern that I've mentioned to the schools is that we might be pushing our problem elsewhere, that those parkers who are intent on parking might find another place. I think there's a minimal risk of that, and that certainly be the school's position. There's not a whole lot of areas within a reasonable walking distance. Yes, that could push them to the village, but that's really quite a hike when you get that far. So I think there's minimal risk. If you're, so I want to advise you that it is a possible risk. I don't know that it's a real risk, and you could try it. You could try one of these approaches out and see how it works, so.
Aside from the wear and tear, are the schools asking us to do something about it? Is it a problem?
Yes, the schools are asking, just like they did years ago when it first started, for us to prohibit it, to put, you know, to, and do enforcement of it, and not allow students to park there during the day.
And why?
They have a concern of the pedestrian crossing there. They don't necessarily like the idea of a sanctioned parking lot being there. They have, monitoring is a concern. Things happen in parking lots even during the school day, and they have, they have a hard enough time sort of monitoring and policing that in their own parking lots, and they would suggest to us that that might be a concern that we would have too. You do have the building there, you have dugouts, you have those things, and they would suggest that you might not like what kinds of things might happen there. Those would be the reasons.
Is there any evidence of vandalism from school students historically?
You know, actually, I mean, where we've had our park vandalism was prior to this and in different locations. For what it's worth, this is the least vandalized park of, at this point, in recent history.
I think being that it's so close to the firehouse and schools, I think the schools' concern that there's something going, some things that could take place there is a little bit of an overreach. I mean, yeah, things will happen, but I guess I'm, you know, it's tax-payer property, it's property within the township. If the wear and tear is a problem, then I think we need to address that issue. I think that's certainly, if we're seeing additional wear and tear, that, but...
It's going to get worse if we start maintaining it, if you start plowing it.
Yeah.
As a...
We could never get our money.
Yeah, that is, that is one of the issues. Yeah, we've never, we have not been plowing the snow, and this last year, they parked there anyway. The expensive, we can never charge enough for a permit to cover our expensive plant.
Right, right. Well, I'm not suggesting, at this juncture, I'm not, and I don't know if I'd be interested in doing a permit parking.
Didn't we just discuss the crosswalk there at our last meeting?
Well, that's for the kids to get to the Hero Center after school.
Okay, but I mean, it goes both ways, right? You can cross that way, or you can cross this way, so, I mean, we're almost encouraging it by putting in that crosswalk.
Well, the crosswalk is for closer to Hero, isn't it?
No, no. It's directly at the entrance.
So you're kind of hypocritical of us to...
Well, it's not hypocritical. You got to worry about safety or whatever.
Well, apparently the schools don't.
They are worried, they don't want the kids crossing there since 30:00 in the morning.
If they don't want them crossing, then why don't they police it?
That's why they want us to say no, because they can't afford to police it.
So if we say no, are they going to police it? Are we going to police it?
You know what? You issue a couple tickets by bill out here, and the word gets around, you don't have much of a police problem after the first.
You know what? The school can prohibit it if they want to. Those kids are going there, they could say there's no school parking over there. I mean, why can't they say that? I mean, they're responsible, these students are their students, and they can set the rules for their students. Why do we have to get involved?
I don't know if they can set rules for around the township. They can set rules for their own property, and what happens in the school, I don't believe they can...
Well, look at the kids, we get in trouble for the stuff they do on social media after school hours and stuff like that, so they have a lot more leeway in what they can, you know, make rules over than what we can. And I'm with Joe, I mean, it's a public property. If the kids park there, they park there. I mean, you know, what are you going to do? It's there. It's a public lot, that their parents' tax dollar thing.
I mean, at the end of the day, what if you got an adult that does walking? And that's where they park their car and decide to take an hour walk around the township? I mean, are we going to...
They can come in and get a permit.
But do you have to make everybody get a permit to...
That's the problem. We keep saying we got...
One thing I would, I'm agnostic as to the outcome here. I can carry out the wish of the board easily. If we do decide to allow parking, or even to do so without a permit, we probably would be asking that maybe we install some parking blocks to help govern and regulate where parking happens a little bit more, we do, to help with some of the issues we had of people parking on the grass and whatnot. So...
Because we're over 100 cars over there daily, right?
Yeah, the peak was 124.
Well, one day we hit like 134 cars.
Yeah, yeah.
That didn't really start until later in the year. It wasn't like that.
Yeah, it's as the sophomores get their cars.
As they each get their license later in the year, more of them have it, so.
My personal opinion is, we should just let it the way it is right now, and if we need to address it later on, we do. Just let it. I am not, I don't think, we don't have a police department, and when we start spending the resources on going after kids that are parking in a public place, I don't, I just...
What I worry about is, we had a mild winter, what if we have a snowy winter, and we're not plowing it? We don't care.
Well, last year, when they, two years ago, when there's so much snow in there, there wasn't anybody parking in there, because unless you had four-wheel drive.
Yeah.
But it wasn't very many.
Okay.
If you plow it, then you got to salt it.
They will come, right.
I mean, and then you're going to have to put lights out there, and the list goes on and on and on.
It does get plowed on occasion by the drain commission. They do need access.
The lift station is there.
Yeah. We'll do a full parking lot though. No, but they, when they bring their back truck in, rather than back out on the, or on the road, they just push it.
It's not very expensive. You help them.
Yeah.
How does that, where do we want to go with this?
I would just love to leave it as is. I don't think we need to do anything at this time.
May I ask you?
I think our, I'm not in favor of paving the parking lot, although it hasn't been brought up. I'm not in favor of plowing the parking lot. I'm not in favor of charging for permits. But if we're going to do anything to improve the safety of the students that likely will use it, we should concentrate our funds on improving the crosswalk.
Oh, we are.
Flashing signs or something, and...
Yeah, and you're going to come back with some proposals on that.
Yeah.
In our August meeting, as I recall.
I recall that as well.
I can give you the preliminary numbers. We don't need that tonight.
You're going to really love the solar. Just put it that way.
Yeah, solar's going to look very bright.
Do you have any other?
I can go either way. I kind of go with, let's not do anything.
We are going to follow the sidewalk, right?
We have to.
Yeah, we have to.
We have ordinance that we have to... We'll get a violation.
We are going to follow the new sidewalk.
You'll be looking in the mirror going, do I, am I going to write myself?
I mean, there's a new sidewalk there, that's going to be...
Yes.
I should say leave it the way it is.
Glenn? All right, so we're going to leave for now, we'll deal with...
So we will be proposing some parking blocks, at least, at the very least, to delineate the sidewalk, so that we don't have kids parking over the sidewalk. And we may identify some strategic areas to potentially add some more to deal with some of the anarchy.
Right.
Do we have to have the parking blocks for the new parking lot over at the other part?
They're already in place.
Yeah, they're there.
That was part of that.
Part of the project.
What would it cost for...
Depending on the quantity we buy, I want to say, don't hold me to this, I think they were right around $65 each, so they're not, not that bad, actually. It's cheaper than pouring curb.
Yeah.
All right, anything else for Mr. West this evening?
Thank you.
And we move on to number eight, which is managers' reports and board reports. We start with treasure horning.
I have nothing.
Trustee Kalani?
Just to reiterate, the Heroes Harblin next door team center is, their golf outing is Sunday at 2:00 at the Majestic of Lake Walden, and it's a nine-hole golf outing, $40. And you're all welcome to attend. We certainly welcome foursomes or T-sponsors, so if anyone's interested, please let me know, we can get to a flyer and put something together.
Thank you. Trustee Harper, no report. Trustee Patrici?
No report tonight.
Clerk Shofu?
We are in the process of distributing absentee ballots. We've issued 1,200 applications. We've received 800 back, and we've sent out 853 ballots, and have 144 returned so far.
Larry, what's the deadline for someone to get an absentee ballot?
The last official day, according to the Bureau of Elections, to submit an AV application to get a ballot mailed to you is Saturday, July 30th, by 3:00 p.m. That's kind of pressing if you ask me, because you probably should get it by Thursday before that.
Okay. I have someone who's out of state, but, you know, still resident, or is just temporarily out of state. Should they contact you, or can they just do it online and do an application?
They can contact our office. Okay, we will take care of it. Just clerk's office, either myself or the deputy can take care of it.
Thank you. I have nothing this evening, and I'll turn it over to trustee Jermaine for any comments, and then you're going to give an update.
My report only deals with Merritt Energy, and there were several diagrams that were in our packet, figures. This first one has just been generated recently. It was submitted to the MDEQ last Friday, in fact, so this is very recent. What, the only thing I want to, point that I want to make about this diagram is that the Merritt Energy's environment consultant is conducting quarterly sampling of all of the existing permanent monitoring wells, and when they do that, they gauge the water elevation, which allows them to then determine the groundwater flow direction. And what this diagram is showing us is that the groundwater flow direction is unchanged from last fall, and it's actually consistent with data that they collected when this plant was in operation, when they only had four monitoring wells. This information is based on seven monitoring wells. Across the central part of the site, the groundwater flow does move toward the northeast as has been previously reported. But if you look at the very far south, end of the five-acre parcel, those lines are more in an eastwardly direction. So the groundwater flow direction changes in different parts of the site. Go to the next one. There are two cross-sections that have been prepared based on numerous borings across the site, and this is looking at a number of different monitoring wells across the five-acre parcel from west to east, with west being on the left side. And what it shows is that the upper zone is primarily a clay soil. These are all native materials, but they have sand and gravel seams, as it says there where James has the hand pointing. And you can also see where the excavation occurred in the central part. Got compacted clay at the surface and sand at the bottom. Reason they have sand at the bottom is because it was full of water. They needed to, you know, allow the water to escape while they were back there. And then the native material below that is sand, gravelly sand material, and there are some wells that show pockets of silty sand. But the key factor is at the very bottom of most of these wells, they are running into a competent clay layer. What's interesting about this diagram is that, knowing that the groundwater flow is basically from west to east, it's actually southwest to northeast, but you can see as you move toward the east, which would be the right-hand side of this diagram, the native clay materials drop off greatly. So whereas in, right where the plant was and where the spill occurred, the clay is at about 30 feet below the surface, the further east you go toward the property boundary, they drilled down 100 feet, and they still haven't found clay. So since sulfene is a chemical that is heavier than water, once it gets into the groundwater, it starts sinking, and so that's why they're having to put much deeper wells on the eastern side of the property. Next diagram. So what this one shows is the proposed locations of additional soil borings and monitoring wells that Merritt's consultant has proposed. Again, this document just went to the DEQ on Friday. I would imagine the DEQ will take anywhere from two to three weeks to review it and provide approval, or approval with conditions. What Merritt's consultant is trying to do is put a ring of wells around the known zone of contamination, what we would call sentinel wells, so that they can document that the sulfene is contained, and it's not migrating offsite. And then when they actually begin remediation, they have these wells on the outside boundary in clean zones that can be continually monitored. So the work that was done a little over a month ago in early June, they installed a whole series of temporary monitoring wells. They just stuck in a well point, pulled a water sample, and then backfilled the whole thing with bentonite. And many of the new wells that are proposed are in the vicinity of one of those temporary wells that was installed, because they already know what the groundwater conditions are, you know, as of last month. So if you go up just a little bit, James, they've started with, these are all new permanent wells. They're proposing nine additional permanent monitoring wells, which means they're going to be there for a long time. The first one is, I believe that's number eight, if I can read it properly. Number nine is over closer toward the property boundary, and you can see most of these are very close to one of those temporary wells that are adjacent. There's a well on the west over there, yep, good job. And then if you go down to the south, we're not taking them in numerical order, but they have two wells proposed there in red, and those would be what we would consider upgrading or cross-grading wells, which are presumably in a clean area. The other thing that they're doing is putting in some nested wells. Most of these wells that we've talked about so far will be screened at anywhere from 25 to 30 feet below the ground surface to intersect the water table. However, on the east side of the property, like I was discussing a minute ago, where the, there's no clay barrier, they're going to be putting in nested wells with... the, there's no clay barrier, they're gonna be putting in nested wells, which means they will have a screened interval at the shallow area intersecting the water table where it is, but they're also gonna be putting a second screened interval in an adjacent well right next to the first one, which would be screened at a much lower depth, roughly 10, 10 feet lower. So that way, they can see if it's sinking. And those wells are hard to see on this one, but they are in green. There's one in the very middle of the previous soil excavation area, and the other two are both on the eastern property boundary. The northern one is a brand-new well, so that will have two screened intervals. Monitoring well six on the south is already an existing shallow well, so they're just gonna be adding a deeper screened interval. I suspect that the M D Q will provide concurrence on the proposed work plan relatively quickly, which, in the eyes of the M D Q, that means within a month or less. That would be quick for the state, and it is Merritt's anticipation to begin the field work within two weeks after they get approval. Nothing in this work plan talks about proposed remediation activities at this point, because I think they still wanna get a handle on the vertical, the vertical delineation. They kind of got the horizontal pretty well defined. Incidentally, at our last meeting, when I gave a short presentation, there was a diagram that showed where the proposed, what we thought would be like the outer boundary of the groundwater contamination, and that was based on a limited number of samples that the owner authorized testing on in split samples. Consultant for Merritt Energy did not prepare a diagram similar to that in this particular report, but based on the additional groundwater sample results that are in this report that we didn't previously have access to, I would say that that boundary that was previously suggested has been confirmed with this additional information.
So would it be fair to say, Matt, other than the one well that looks like it must be to the north in red, it's off, the rest are onsite?
Well, onsite and offsite is kind of, it's all property that's owned by the same owner.
But within that square boundary of...
Yeah, well, the square boundary is going the way they've been, all the trees are gone now, they're removing the fence.
Okay.
It's gonna look more like just one big field.
Okay.
Headed, you know, from Lone Tree Road, you're not gonna be able to see those stick-up wells. They're too far away to really see them without binoculars or something like that, so it's losing its characteristics of what it used to be pretty rapidly right now.
And there's been some testing of residential wells, correct?
Yes, 12 residential wells have been tested, and thanks to our D P W department, I provided them a list of the addresses, and can you, this is a diagram that shows where those 12 wells are located, but just to put it in perspective, the five-acre parcel is the square there, and, you know, M 59 would be that double-lane road to the north, and Pleasant Valley is the main road north and south through that area. So there were wells, there was one resident on Pleasant Valley Road, three on Lone Tree Road, and all of the remaining ones were on what I'll call private roads. Is that the right term for them?
Yeah.
That are off of either Comish Road or Lone Tree Road, is how you would access them. So the methodology, Merritt Energy actually contacted more residents than gave permission. Their policy was that they would give them two phone calls, and if they didn't get a response after two, they kind of just took them off the list and went on to somebody else.
And that's actually, there aren't a lot of houses to choose from, so there's not really any...
Did you include the second diagram? Yeah. Yeah, that's just a little larger scale there that helps you see where, where the houses were. I thought they were both helpful, Bob, so thanks for doing that.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions for Matt at this point?
I have one more thing I'd like to say, and that is following the, I think this all came down, actually, last Friday, but once Merritt had submitted this document to the M D Q, they do feel that they have sufficient information now to schedule a public hearing. They have asked for the township's assistance to perhaps provide a meeting place, televise it if we could, provide the audiovisual equipment like we're using tonight. But we would, that would really, and help with advertising, you know, press releases or letters to the residents, things like that. But otherwise, it would not be a township meeting. We would not, it would be their meeting. They would schedule the speakers and determine the sequence and duration and all that kind of stuff. They're waiting to hear confirmation from one of their vice presidents, who is in Texas and was on jury duty today, and not able, I've been checking my emails as, even during the meeting tonight, to see if we did get final approval. I do know that they want the Livingston County Health Department involved, and also the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality. Both of those parties have indicated their availability. The tentative date, and I emphasize the word tentative date, would be a week from tonight in this room. But it's not final yet, because we're waiting to get the, you know, Merritt to say that their vice president will be available next week. If it has to be changed, no, obviously, we'll let everybody know, but I think, James, you were going to prepare a letter to send the residents?
Yeah, hopefully, we'll have confirmation by tomorrow. That way, we have enough time to put them, because we sent the previous mailing and indicated we would notify them again.
And we also, Matt and I chatted a little bit about this, that we requested that Merritt actually put the meeting notice on their letterhead, since it's their meeting, and then we would just be a vehicle to get it to the people.
Like a press release?
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Yep. So you, we'll probably find out, you, probably tomorrow sometime?
I think so.
Okay.
I mean, they know the time's essence, so... But I guess if I could sum it up, is this was about what we expected, and it's certainly good news for the residents in the area that it appears to be contained, and, you know, it's gonna be a lot easier to remediate and clean up if you have a much smaller area, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Manager Whitman, your report?
Thank you, Ms. Supervisor. I don't have any, in the interest of time, don't have any highlights from operation reports. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
That being said, we'll move on to item number nine, closed session.
Make a motion to move to closed session to consider the quarterly personnel evaluation of the township manager and his request.
Support, motion by trustee Germaine, second by trustee Harper. Discussion?
Do we have all the reports in from all the trustees?
I have now received two reports. We have five.
So why, why are we meeting until all the reports come in?
Well, for one, we can provide a verbal report.
Hmm?
We can provide a verbal report. And I also, I believe that traditionally, we have not prepared a written report for quarterly evaluations. It's usually just done the annual.
It was requested three weeks ago, though. People had plenty of time to get it in, so we could read them and, and review them in our own minds before we go into a meeting, and now we're going into a meeting and we're gonna hear about them. I don't think that's what the, what the protocol was, was it?
No.
I'm just throwing it out. We can meet if you want, I mean...
I'm just saying, it's unfair to James, because people didn't have time to get them in.
We're the ones that have to discuss it. It's up to you, I don't care. Throwing it out.
Any other comments? Have a clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Petrousi?
No.
Supervisor Fountain?
No.
Treasure Horni?
Yes.
Clerk Chauvou?
Yes.
Trustee Kalani? Trustee Harper?
Yes.
Trustee Germaine?
Yes.
We are in closed session. Are we moving? Yes, we're gonna move into the other room.
One thing I forgot to address, should I wait after, or can I just have to know?
Yes, now, you can go ahead and ask.
D T E wants to install one of those wireless things on the side of our house, so they have constant 20% of monitoring from our home. Not that I was probably sad necessarily, if, if we opt out of it, which my husband would like to, they want to charge us $70, and then they want to charge us an additional $10 every month for them, which I think is ludicrous. Do you guys have any idea if the township has control over that? If you can call them and say, we don't approve of this, you're obviously the monopoly of the area for land law trustees, we can afford some, or otherwise, we can have it. What, do you have any idea what other options would be? You can too? He's good. He needs a break.